We'd like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands united nations under God, indivisible, infinite and everlasting. No vote, please call the roll.
Alderman Bouillon.
Here.
Alderman Gariga.
Here.
Alderman Collaren.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Lewis.
Here.
Alderman Maranty.
Here.
Alderman Mizan.
Here.
Alderman Rosenbaum.
Here.
Alderman Sauer.
Here.
President Di Pietro.
Here.
Kyver Loesch, you're dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the July 16th meeting and placed him on file. Rob, introduction and second, Dewan. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is carried. Introduction and second, you're dispensed with the reading of the City Treasurer's report as of July 31st and place it on file. Introduction. Calvin, second. Eileen, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. On your desks are copies of all the committee reports. Once again, may I have a motion and a second to place committee reports on file? Introduction. Dewan, a second. Rob, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We have a communication from the Greenport Rescue Squad providing a copy of the Columbia County 2018 Call Analysis. Put it on file, can I have the introduction and a second? Eileen, second. Trisha, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Okay, let's get to resolutions. I'm sorry, for resolutions, we have to pay the votes. Okay. Any questions about bills? From the council? In that case, can I have the introduction to the bills? Rob, and a second. Trisha.
Just a quick delivery of 26,260.
That's to fulfill our contract. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. The first resolution. It's for Commissioner Bead. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Bouillon.
Aye.
Alderman Gariga.
Aye.
Alderman Collaren.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Maranty.
Aye.
Alderman Mizan.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Alderman Sauer.
Aye.
Alderman O'Fola.
Aye.
President Di Pietro.
No vote. The next resolution is authorizes the development of a dog park on the former Foster Refrigeration Site. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Bouillon.
Aye.
Alderman O'Fola. Alderman Gariga.
Aye.
Aye.
President Di Pietro. Alderman Collaren.
No vote.
Aye.
The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a master contract with the New
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
York State Department of State for the downtown revitalization initiative.
Alderman Maranty.
I'd like to recognize that everybody had put in hard work in making this happen
I'm sure you've all had a chance to read this. Kyver, roll call vote, please.
and look forward to being dogged in the city.
Alderman Bouillon.
Aye. Aye.
Alderman Gariga. Alderman Mizan.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Collaren. Alderman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Sauer. Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Bola. Alderman Maranty.
Aye.
Aye.
President Di Pietro. Alderman Mizan.
No vote.
Aye.
Well, we have a dog park.
Alderman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Alderman Sauer.
Aye.
Alderman Bola.
Aye.
President Di Pietro.
No vote. May I have a question, that's our clerk tonight, as Sherri is standing in for Tracy Okay, the next. Three resolutions are all new and they all tie in together. I'll explain as Rob Perry has explained to me. These resolutions pertain to the city's application for Water Infrastructure Improvement and hasn't done this before. The next resolution opposes federal and state legislation that allows for heavier and longer Act grant to install a new 12-inch water main on the 500 block of Washington Street. For the past five summers, the water department has endeavored to upgrade water mains on Carroll, trucks. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Bouillon.
Short, Harry Howard, Prospect and Washington in order to replace a number of 125-year-old
Aye.
Alderman Gariga.
Aye.
Alderman Collaren.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
4-inch cast iron mains with newer and larger mains.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Maranty.
Aye.
Alderman Mizan.
The primary goal is to maintain high-quality water standards for the future and improve
Aye.
Alderman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Alderman Sauer.
flow for fire protection. Although the welding department was able to complete other portions of the subgrade, this block grant poses, I'm sorry, this block poses the greatest challenge. Specifically, there are the high-density houses as well as many utility conflicts within a small footprint. For the water department, to complete this work in addition to their regular responsibilities, it would result in a perpetual construction site for several years on one block. The three grant resolutions before you include the secret determination authorizing the resolution to apply for the grant and the bond resolution. That explains what these address. So first, let's do all three at once and can I have a motion to, I forget this procedure you established, Rob, a motion to do this without going through a committee?
Right.
With a show of hands, everyone in favor is letting all three of these go through tonight without going through a committee? Can I have a show of hands, please? Okay, so now we can go to the next stage. For number five, authorizing the improvements, the bond issuance, can I have an introduction and a second? Rob, Eileen, now can I have a roll call vote?
Alderman Bouillon.
Aye.
Alderman Gariga.
Aye.
Alderman Collaren.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Maranty.
Aye.
Alderman Mizan.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Alderman Sauer.
Aye.
Alderman Bola.
Aye.
President Di Pietro.
No vote. The next resolution is declaring this is a type 2 action. Andy, want to give a quick explanation of what that means?
Yeah, so whenever we make any sort of grant application, we need to make sure that we do a secret analysis. In this particular instance, based upon the repair of municipal infrastructure, it's deemed a type 2 action. So in connection with the grant application, we not only have to show that we have bonded the funds, we have to show that you've made that secret determination. And then finally, just to look ahead, the last resolution would be authorizing the specific terms if we can talk about it.
Can I have an introduction and a second? John, second. Eileen, a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Bouillon.
Aye.
Alderman Gariga.
Aye.
Alderman Collaren.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Maranty.
Aye.
Alderman Mizan.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Alderman Sauer.
Aye.
Alderman Bola.
Aye.
President Di Pietro.
No vote. The next resolution authorizes the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with Cornell Cooperative Extension for Crosswalks Improvements. Is Michael Chimides here?
He is.
Michael, you want to describe this since you worked on this?
Yeah, so this is a grant from Cornell Cooperative Extension. It's part of their program where they're trying to improve road safety for all kinds of people who are using the streets, motorists, bicyclists, and pedestrians within the Hudson City School District, which includes the city of Hudson. They've offered to provide $4,000 for crosswalks. I know many of the members of the council, many members of the public, including many of you who are here today, have talked about the need for more crosswalks, so this provides some of that funding. There's kind of a rush because they're, in order to get the first batch of funding, we need to sort of, we need to get that check by the end of next month, so I thought if we wait until next month to pass this resolution, we might kind of miss that window. So basically, they're going to give us, the city, $4,000. The only thing they really need in return is some basic reporting on how that money is spent, and they also need some proof of insurance, which I am assuming that the attorney has looked over and feels like we can provide that. So that's the basic scoop.
Thank you. So first, I need a show of hands to allow us to progress with this resolution despite not having gone through committee. Thank you. Next, I need an introduction and a second. Tiffany and Dewan, and now a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Bouillon.
Aye.
Alderman Gariga.
Aye.
Alderman Collaren.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Maranty.
Aye.
Alderman Mizan.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Alderman Sauer.
Aye.
Alderman Bola.
Aye.
President Di Pietro.
No vote. Now, the next resolution, we'll also need, well, let me describe it first. We've used up our Le Verge contract, so in order to write this grant that we've authorized, this is an extension with Le Verge for a set price, which I believe is $3,000...
$691.
$691, that's accurate, to write this grant. Can we, since, I don't believe it went to go to finance, Rob?
No.
So it needs to be, I need a show of hands to allow this to go through without coming through committee? In favor? Okay, now I need an introduction and a second. Rob, second. Kamal, a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Bouillon.
Aye.
Alderman Gariga.
Aye.
Alderman Collaren.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Maranty.
Aye.
Alderman Mizan.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Alderman Sauer.
Aye.
Alderman Bola.
Aye.
President Di Pietro.
No vote. Okay, we have a last-minute resolution here from the mayor author, and this is, this speaks to the problems that have been impacting the city regarding the Calaruso project at the Paul Road and at the water front. What the mayor is asking for here is to establish clear title, whatever it may be, whoever may have that title. And this is a resolution allowing him to get the title searched. So first, I'll need a show of hands to allow us to go through tonight. Okay, we have a majority there. Now I need an introduction and a second. Kamal, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Bouillon.
Aye.
Alderman Gariga.
Aye.
Alderman Collaren.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Maranty.
Aye.
Alderman Mizan.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Alderman Sauer.
Aye.
Alderman Bola.
Aye.
President Di Pietro.
No vote. Once again, I need a show of hands to allow this next resolution to go through without having gone through committee. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, we can go through with it. Can I have an introduction and a second? Oh, by the way, it's a transfer of funds, we're all familiar with this, the PPW. Eileen and Rob, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Bouillon.
Aye.
Alderman Gariga.
Aye.
Alderman Collaren.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Maranty.
Aye.
Alderman Mizan.
Aye.
Alderman Sauer.
Aye.
Alderman Bola.
Aye.
President Di Pietro.
No vote. Now, the next resolution, we'll also need, well, let me describe it first. We've used up our Le Verge contract, so in order to write this grant that we've authorized, this is an extension with Le Verge for a set price, which I believe is $3,000...
$691.
$691, that's accurate, to write this grant. Can we, since, I don't believe it went to go to finance, Rob?
No.
So it needs to be, I need a show of hands to allow this to go through without coming through committee? In favor? Okay, now I need an introduction and a second. Rob, second. Rich, a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Bouillon.
Aye.
Alderman Gariga.
Aye.
Alderman Collaren.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Maranty.
Aye.
Alderman Mizan.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Alderman Sauer.
Aye.
Alderman Bola.
Aye.
President Di Pietro.
No vote. Okay, we have a last-minute resolution here from the mayor author, and this is, this speaks to the problems that have been impacting the city regarding the Calaruso project at the Paul Road and at the water front. What the mayor is asking for here is to establish clear title, whatever it may be, whoever may have that title. And this is a resolution allowing him to get the title searched. So first, I'll need a show of hands to allow us to go through tonight. Okay, we have a majority there. Now I need an introduction and a second. John, second. Kamal, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Bouillon.
Aye.
Alderman Gariga.
Aye.
Alderman Collaren.
Aye.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Maranty.
Aye.
Alderman Mizan.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenbaum.
Aye.
Alderman Sauer.
Aye.
Alderman Bola.
Aye.
President Di Pietro.
No vote. The next resolution, resolution number 12, it should be numbered, authorizes the mayor to execute the utility purchase agreement with the LP Greenport Solar. Excuse me a second, this has gone through committee? Yes?
I just would like to have a motion to table the contract for one month and then try to explain afterwards if the motion's set.
One second, the motion.
All in favor of tabling it? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed to tabling it?
Nay.
Nay.
Three, four, six to four.
I can explain more.
I don't know why. You probably voted out.
The motion, the resolution's been tabled.
But I can explain the table.
Okay.
Only to have, I think, first of all, the company's done a very good job in presenting their case. I think they're a good company and support local solar, certainly something we should be looking into, but I just think we have to do a little bit more research in terms of comparables for anyone else who's providing a similar type of product, considering that we'll be entering into a long-term purchase agreement. And I do, again, not to say anything negative about either the contract, it seems optimal, and the company, just to see if we're really doing our best due diligence here, if we're going to enter into a purchase agreement for this amount of time, so I think one more month is not too bad of a thing to ask of the council.
So, yes, I'm...
So John, do you recommend to go to a committee?
I think we should have one more, just one more hearing with the Economic Development Committee about possible alternatives, and then we could present the contract again next month to vote on it, but if we're going to enter into a 20-year purchase agreement with the, well, 10, with a multi-year purchase agreement with the provider, then we should, I think, consider it one.
This agreement does not preclude us from going forward and looking into other sources.
But we haven't looked into other sources, that's what my point is.
One more time.
My point is just that we haven't looked into other sources, although we've done a lot of research with this one company and they're great, but I'm not going to knock that, and I think we should, I'm not saying we don't consider them, I just think we should just do, one more month is not that much to ask for, regardless of what it is.
Kamal, you were next.
Yeah, I have a question for Andy. What's different about this, that it doesn't have to go to bid?
Well, the question becomes whether we have a sole source, you know, to provide utility benefits, and so it was my understanding that that was looked at and that, you know, this was the provider that was available to the city. Certainly, if you, you know, come up with information that suggests otherwise, you know, the city could look at that, but if you're going to put out the bid and there's no one that can provide the benefit, then, you know, that clearly puts it in a different position. You know, that's my understanding of where we are. I think, you know, if the council or the committee wants to look at that and there's evidence to the contrary, we could take it off, but that's my understanding right now.
All right.
John, I know you talked a little bit about net metering.
Virtual net metering, yeah.
Yep, and started to look into that, and it is pretty dense stuff, you know, for me, and is there anything else you would suggest we look at between?
Just to make sure that there are no other comparable providers doing similarly. I mean, it's a virtual net metering project, if we're taking electricity from a solar farm in upstate New York or from Greenport, so the concept is great and we should be supportive. You know, I'm basically in favor of the contract as it stands in that it's a local solar field and it will encourage local customers to use the field, but if we stand to be the single largest purchaser, or one of the largest sole purchasers in the project, we should just have a little bit more diligence about, just make sure we're doing the total best thing in terms of savings for the city, that's it. Not against the project, just to make sure that we're looking at everything, since we've only looked at more.
Yeah, I mean, we have been looking at this for over a year.
We've been looking at one project for over a year. So I'd say, I don't know if we need RFP or not, it's just to make sure if it's a virtual net metering project that we're entering, then to see if there are other people doing a similar thing, just to make sure that we're getting the best possible outcome for the city, which I think we are, but one more month to make sure that we are, I think, is...
So net metering essentially is what you would have, was look at other providers.
I think that's the law, is up to 2021, that there's companies that sell virtual net metering credits based on solar fields, drop in New York State, there's Michael Hare, there's people in Hudson that have expertise in this, that we can talk through about it, but I think just looking at it for one more month to make sure that we get the best possible savings.
Okay, so table until next month, sorry.
Can I input, can I speak to just some other questions?
Maybe later, and then I'll focus the question. Rich, did you?
No, like, I mean, the, you know, part of the difference is between this program versus other programs that we've had in the past, is that the other programs in the past have been on floating rate basis, and that's how we fell out the money and fell out of the strike rate, strike price, and unfortunately, that's how we're paying more. This is, for people, I posted, I have a blog post on fourthboardhudson.com that links directly to the presentation that the LP did, as well as the contract itself, if anyone wants to see. This is something where we would, they would determine over length of time how many kilowatts hours that we need, we would pay them for the, for instance, if it's 100 kilowatt hours per month, we would pay for 90, then we'd receive a credit for 100 against our national grid bill, and that's how it works, and it's a fixed rate over a length of time. So that is a different process, they are as local, I think, as you're going to get here, I mean, I understand net metering, but that does, and virtual net metering, but, you know, that also, there's definitely cost advantages to having one big solar farm and then getting all your energy from one big solar farm.
Agreed.
As opposed to multiple smaller ones.
Agreed, I just, other vendors to do it, so I just want to make sure we're getting.
Okay, let's move on. Rich, did you say anything?
That's it.
Oh, okay, next resolution. So I'd like to untable a motion to bring up the... Do I have a second? To read, we're bringing back an I am or thinks resolution. Rob, it's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we'll go and discuss, now before we start this, a couple of things I'd like to make clear here. First of all, we've received correspondence from a number of people, and their letters will go into the record. Matt McGee, Bob Rasner, John Sobel, Daniel Schmider, Jamie Smith-Quinn, John Darby, the Hudson Business Coalition, Peg Patterson, Chuck Rosenbaum, Jamie Newshats, Carolyn Lawrence, and Christine Bentley. And I have to say, all but one in favor. Now, before we discuss this at all, let's be clear. In the law that was enacted a few years back, it was stated explicitly in section 274-41, the Tourism Board is hereby empowered to take all reasonable steps, it determines desirable, necessary, and proper to market the city of Hudson as a destination for overnight and day trip visitors by making use of the funds and sit-aside by the City Treasurer pursuant to 275-41B. Now, having stated that, it does not mean we have to, as a council, and Andy has opined on this, and I'll read you what Andy has said. Ultimately, the council makes the decision with regard to the expenditure of funds derived[1550.25] derived from the lodging tax. The recommendation should come from the Tourism Board. However, thereafter, it is up to the council to approve or deny. If the council wishes to reject a proposed expenditure from the Tourism Board, it could do so, which would then send the matter back to the Tourism Board to prepare another proposal. So what I'm trying to establish here is that there is no sense that this money or anyone in their deepest dreams can divert this money from anything but the Tourism Board. Let's make that clear as our, as sort of our base of our discussion.
Is that true?
Yeah, and it needs to be...
Wouldn't lie this way.
It needs to be, yeah, it needs to be in keeping with the directive in the law. You know, I think, you know, what I did applying to the council as well is there's certainly some discretion there in terms of what, you know, one would consider to be improving the marketability of the city. You know, it's not a bright line. Certainly, I think the initial intention when the law was passed was that it would be directed toward, you know, a variety of marketing opportunities or enhancement opportunities for the city. And you've done that in the past with regard to supporting festivals and events and things of that nature. You know, and that's as the law's currently written. It is, it has been renewed by the New York State Legislature. We're awaiting the governor's signature. Once that occurs and the enabling legislation extending the law has passed the ball muster in passage by the governor, then this council would take up its own. And there may be some clarifications you want to make to it in the future.
Including?
But my biggest, you know, just to explain what I was alluding to in that statement to Tom Rell is that, you know, the Tourism Board is charged with that duty pursuant to the sections that were recited to basically develop a strategy and present it. And then ultimately, we know that the approval of the contract has to come through you guys. And so you exercise that discretion and you can send it back if you feel necessary.
Rob?
And Tom, I'd just like to clarify, so the money we're looking at in this resolution, so using round numbers, if 200, if $520,000 came in through the lodging over the last period, so 2017, 2018, 2019, and about 520, 520, $260,000 of that ended up in the general fund, which is being used for other expenditures for the city. And $260 is in a reserve fund specifically to be used for these type of issue, these type of requests.
Got a question or a...
A clarification.
Oh, I, did you find out from Heather earlier what the actual number is?
Oh, actually, yeah, I had the number frozen from the findings. Sorry, I just meant like the split of monies.
Yep. And of course, as it gets higher, Tourism Board gets much less.
Right.
Council, any further discussion? Kamal?
What's the price of the four phases? Because I know 75K is the original.
It's, that is the full contract amount, which is in that contract also attached to the resolution. That is the full.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because last week was presented?
No, that's, it is the full amount.
And is there a set marker on how much the city is supposed to spend on marketing?
Well, again, you know, with the prevailing law, I mean, there could be some issues about what marketing means precisely. But beyond that, it's what's in the fund right now. We can't take that money for, and use it for other purposes by law. And whether that was the greatest law, that is a whole nother conversation.
I mean, I seem to think, looking at the proposal, not to diminish the work that the Tourism Board has done, I do think that it's, it just doesn't seem, it seems rather weak to me. I think that the idea of how they are proposing doing community-based research sounds like using Facebook and social media and emailing and the internet a very passive way to engage the community versus very heavy interaction with businesses and people who have a different sense of position. The graphic design element, I think, from the company seems rather lacking on that end, all that's subjective. I think there's nothing wrong with saying that if we ask that the Tourism Board to take more time and maybe look at for a better fit for the city, one that fits the idea of more community involvement or a different type of, you know, examination what marketing actually means under law. Not take, not saying, I mean, I definitely could see the benefit in doing a study like this. I just think that, granted, I didn't hear Chandler Thinks in person make a proposal. Only might have done what was said at last week's meeting in terms of talking more about what they do. But certainly, what they presented as a contract seems rather, our proposal seems rather lacking by my estimate.
Tiffany, you're next.
Yes, thank you. I happen to also agree with Alderman Rosenbauer. You know, with the email that we have received, I've also had received personal messages and people stopping me on the street as well. There's a huge concern of this company that is way out in Nashville, Tennessee. And people want to know, why are we not looking for a local company to do the same work for less of price? Other opinions have been that the city has been using very little money and look at all the tourists that we have now to the point where the discussions of Airbnbs is the topic. We have hotels that are in the making and already built and taking over the city. Some people also feel like, is this branding with this amount of money, is this a way to create more tourism, to push the community out? You know, a lot of these concerns have been coming up. And yes, the money is set for it. But I also agree that maybe we should look for a different company, somewhere local, someone that knows Hudson without having to study Hudson. I know last week, there was comments in the audience that suggested that they would do work for free for the city and even using local talent to help participate in that. So I think, you know, it should go back to the committee and do some more research.
Rob?
Tom, could I ask Rich to talk about the process a little bit? About the proposal process and how many meetings you had and how the public was able to, and how local groups could apply.
Right. Once again, I have a blog post on fourthwardhudson.com which has, regarding the Tourism Board, which has links to all the laws and all the supporting documentation. So I advise you to go there, fourthwardhudson.com. And as Tom said, you know, to reiterate the law itself, the Tourism Board is hereby empowered to take all reasonable steps that determines desirable, necessary, and proper to market the city of Hudson as a destination for overnight and day trip visitors by making use of the funds set aside by the City Treasurer. Now, this went in front of all of us back in March of 2008 where we approved this because then the Arts, Entertainment, and Tourism Committee was disbanded and we created the Tourism Board instead. And everyone here on this council voted in favor of the four appointees that we had. And going back is like, yes, there is a 4% tax on all lodging. All lodging mean BnBs and Airbnb's and short-term rentals. That 4% tax is split between the general fund and the Tourism Board with a cap amount of $250,000 on the Tourism Board. So the idea is that this Tourism Board is an economic driver for the city so that if the lodging tax, for instance, brought in a million dollars, you would still have the cap of $250,000.
But what do they do, what do they work? Tell us what, tell us what they said, why you thought that they were a good fit.
Well, we went, we talked to other local Tourism Boards, such as Columbia County Tourism, Duchess County Tourism. They gave us the names of people who do this marketing research. This is what these Tourism Boards do. We approached all of them in the local area, people who do Westchester County Tourism, Duchess, Columbia County Tourism. We approached all of them. We received about a dozen different proposals in. Now, because Roger Gil, the other Hudson Valley did a story on the, on the RFP process, Chandler Thinks found us and they presented to us. What they are is they do, they are a specialty firm that does small and medium-sized businesses. They're, not, I'm sorry, medium-sized tourism municipalities. And they have over another 50 clients listed throughout the country. He is, he's a speaker at different tourism conferences. I mean, he's well-known in his industry. And then, like I said, he approached us and this was his proposal. The thing with this proposal is that it focuses on doing the research work, community input work, which is also in person and meeting with people first to develop a long-range strategic plan. And yes, even though you can say that Tourism is doing well now, the idea is to fill in the gaps and the idea is to have a long-range plan for the city of Hudson to continue this process and to continue bringing money into the general fund because that is the purpose of this law and how it would bring. The Tourism Board itself has created a mission statement, which I'd like to read to all of you. The mission of the Hudson Tourism Board is to establish the city and the city of Hudson as a preferred destination while embracing smart growth and enhancing the economy and quality of life for all Hudson residents. That is our mission. We have spent a part of, a good part of a year putting out the RFP proposals, going through them, meeting with people. This is by far, we feel, the most experienced person who has such a wide breadth of knowledge in this industry.
Thank you. Tiffany, you're next.
Oh. I'm sorry, I won't answer.
Sure.
And in addition, this isn't the only money that the Tourism Board has spent. Please be aware that that $20,000, which was taken out of the budget for the Arts and Entertainment Committee, the Tourism Board has replenished that so that other events throughout the city, such as Flag Day, the Bangladeshi Festival, Black Arts Cultural Festival, all those other festivals have been refunded with this Tourism Lodging Tax Fund.
Thank you. Kamal?
This is a question for Rich. Happy residents equals happy visitors was a moniker that you used last week. But I didn't see any deliverables in the proposal that kind of solved that equation. Can you kind of speak to that?
Well, what this is, is a plan for him to go out and do the research work and find out what the issues are. If people aren't happy, then we go out and look at that and figure out, okay, well, what problems are out there and what do we need? Now, this is why you bring in a, bring in a third party to do the work for us, to present us with a plan. You know, I'm sure we all have different opinions as to why people are happy or not in this town. So the idea is like, you know, similar, like I said, similar to going out and having a third party do a study on JLE and, you know, finding what's, what's good and bad or what needs work. That's what we're doing here. And it's figuring out, you know, where are the gaps? For instance, we've talked with the people who, who work at Cooperstown, New York. You know, Cooperstown, New York, everyone knows, Hall, Baseball Hall of Fame. I was there recently for a two-day conference in the middle of the week, a Tuesday, Wednesday conference. And that's what their Tourism Board does, is they go out and they specifically say, where are the gaps, where can we fill these gaps in? And like I said, it is, yes, it's really, it's good that this money is coming in right now. But the thing is, what we need is a long-range plan to make sure that these funds are still available for the future.
Sorry. Oh, you're, I'm, Tiffany.
With that being said, and all the concerns, and also through social media with the concerns, you know, it was quite the opposite from, you know, the support that we received through email. And it was also people local that suggested their companies as well. You know, once again, this, I feel that it should go back to the committee and we look at that again and possibly find someone to do the study locally and possibly for less money. And I would like to make a motion to take this and go back to the committee.
I make a second. Well, you know we have to reject it, though.
Yeah, I think we have to reject it.
What about if they just clarify, if you get clarification from them from the, from the company about any issues that we're raising in terms of, if we reject it outright or give them a chance to respond to what seemed like the Robin boilerplate?
I'd rather bring it to a vote tonight.
I'd like to ask a question, City Attorney. It seems as though the law that you provided to us was meant to empower the Tourism Board. People have been put on the Tourism Board. What, what should be the standard for the council to be able to push something back? You know, we, I don't know anything about promoting tourism. This group has spent a year. What, what should be the standard? Bad graphics, I don't think, is enough.
No, I mean, it wasn't just that.
Yeah, no. I would say, yeah, I mean, it certainly, the ultimate expenditure of the money via contract is going to be left to each of your sound discretion. Okay? In that, what I mean by that is, there's a proposal to have essentially a strategic plan, if you want to call it that, a feasibility study to chart out in the future on a long-term basis how to spend that money. That's the proposal. Individual, all the people can look at that and say, well, I think that money should rather be spent directly hypothetically on print ads, radio ads, you know, Facebook ads or things of that nature. And so, you know, if someone felt really strongly about that, and again, this is just a hypothetical, trying to help answer this question, then perhaps, if there was a majority, you could say, look, we feel that it's, we need more immediate marketing as opposed to that. Those would be the types of things you would be thinking about. But you'd be thinking about them all within the ambit of, is it marketing? Is it looking to promote daytime and overnight trip visitors? And is this proposal to spend a portion of the lodging tax funds that were specifically set aside for this purpose, is this a reasonable use of that? I mean, I, I can't tell each and every one of you, you must, you know, vote yes or no, but you need to look at that and say, is this in furtherance of, A, the original creation of the lodging tax, B, the mission given to the Tourism Board, and C, based upon what they presented to us, is, does this further that?
You know, and I'm going to remind you, as I said at the beginning, this money cannot be diverted towards other purposes. Kamal?
I think the confusion is, is not whether we should spend the money, but if this company is right for the city. I know everybody's explanation keeps saying the same thing, but no one's really telling me why specifically this company. And one of the things that worried me as I go through the proposal is there's some language in there that kind of sounds like we're going to tell residents how to feel about Hudson and how to explain it.
Oh, Rob?
So I guess, you know, to your point, Kamal, we charge these boards and these committees, whether they're the Tourism Board or the other boards that have appointed officials to run and manage their boards and committees and bring the expertise there and to spend the time to, you know, have the meetings, have open meetings, invite the public and be part of the process from, from day one to when we get it. And so we're at the point now where we're making a decision on a recommendation on dollars when a lot of this at the time could be brought up at the start of the process as opposed to at the end of the process. And I personally would assume that, you know, I have faith in the fact that we have boards and committees in the city, as we are elected officials, that are doing their job and vetting those folks and doing what's right under their charter or mission.
And I get that and I know what committees are for. My thing is, we are now challenging a decision and I just want to make sure that we're making an informed decision. So I think it's too early for us to put this through without getting more information on if this company is right.
Rich?
This company, Chandler Thinks, has experience in over 50 other small-to-medium-sized municipal Tourism Boards' marketing projects. I could list them, I can go through each one of them here. Some of them you'll know, like Galveston, Texas, Galveston Island, Texas, Mason, Georgia, Fingle Lakes here in New York. And yes, their focus is mostly on the southeast. But, you know, part of it is also coming here without any other preconceived notions, with a fresh eye and talking to people and finding out, you know, as opposed to putting their spin on it. Since they are coming here without knowing, they are really gaining that information from talking to people as opposed to what they might already think. And, you know, may, this project here is really based, based upon doing the research and putting together a plan, whereas many other places just said, okay, this is what we're going to give you. We're going to give you X number of videos or, you know, this marketing scheme. This is not saying that there is a specific plan in place until after the research work is done.
Tiffany?
Usually, just like we have today from that was representing a solar program, the, we have people that come in, that speak on behalf of their businesses and so forth. Did they ever come to the committee and speak on behalf of their work? Did they come up to Hudson and present? Did they ever come to the full council?
No, we did it in the, in the Tourism Board meetings, which are open to the public and are, you know, another...
But such a group like this, they should present in front of the council, just like any others.
I mean, we do have other people who are here in the audience who are part of the Tourism Board.
No, I understand, but what's the thing about this specific company? Usually, we have a presenter that speaks on behalf to give us more insight, just like Alderman Johnson said, you know, we have limited information and not enough from this company to hear from them. So maybe send them an invite.
Let's bring this to a vote and then we can decide where we go. Now, we have the public last meeting on this. This is, there's no conversation at this point, just the council. Sorry about that. Oh, yeah, we need an introduction in a second. Rich and Rob. Both go home, please.
Alderman Bouillon?
Aye.
Alderman Corita?
Were the concerns that were stated this evening enough?
Alderman Hollering?
I think sooner or later, as city government, when we have laws passed and then we empower boards, I think for us to second-guess them at the end, there ought to be a high watermark that we have to get over in order to do that. So I'm voting in favor of the resolution.
Alderman Johnson?
Uh, no.
Alderman Lewis?
No.
Alderman Morante?
I did attend a couple of the Tourism Committees and there's a lot of good people and very smart people on that committee. And I respect their opinion. And it sounds like Chandler has a small niche to our city in terms of what they deal with. We got to stop kicking this can down the road and take a chance here in terms of the tourism, you know, we can't keep, you know, we got to, we got to take a chance. And I, I vote aye.
Alderman Mizon?
No.
Alderman Rosenthal?
Again, it's no knock to the work that the Tourism Board's trying to do. And I still think that if the company did a great presentation to the Tourism Board, the materials that they're providing us, the people who allocate the money seem rather lacking, and that's my opinion. So, you know, I'd like to see something better if we're going to do this. So I'm voting aye.
Alderman Sarwar?
This is a great program and I think we can do it. This law already made it, so I don't know. Just law already made it, so I don't know.
I mean, it's not really a situation where one abstained. You're of course not required to vote, that's understood by Roberts, but no one can force you to vote, but.
I love that.
You want to stay with that?
I'd say yes.
Yes, you abstain?
Say yes. Yeah, aye.
Alderman Bolo.
I would just like to thank the volunteers of the tourism board over the past year for all of your hard work and it's a great bunch and they keep me to task, which doesn't happen very often, but thank you very much and I vote aye.
So, that leaves it to me. Before I vote, I just want to say that I think the law as it was crafted was a huge mistake, allocating funds for a specific purpose like that. It's not good government. However, it is the law and I respect the rule of law and I also respect the members of the board. So, while I'm not thrilled about this, I feel obligated to vote yes.
Well, it's just a, it's not a question of respecting or disrespecting the work of the board. We can still.
I understand that, Tom. I'm just saying, that's how I personally feel.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
I respect everybody's vote, but can we not do what happened with Alderman Sarwar again? I mean, when he lays out his vote, that's it. There's not supposed to be a discussion on his particular vote.
Agreed.
That's not actually.
I mean, we. That is true. Two votes.
Correct. But often, in those times, I've been doing some research on abstentions and I just wanted to remind them the nature of abstentions.
You know, he's reminding him, he swore an oath. He said it was no need to remind him. He took a sworn oath like the rest of us. He gave him a hand vote like the rest of us.
Right.
I mean, and he made it vote because he said, I don't know, I abstain. And then it was like you forced him to vote yes.
Yes.
And that is, and that is not right.
That's not true.
And that's not right.
I don't know. I don't know if you forced him, but it was.
He was under pressure.
Under pressure, yeah.
Seven thousand people in Tennessee is insane.
I was not under pressure, I was thinking, so.
You ought to abstain. Instead, you abstained.
But, yeah, I said, I said, I want to give a vote that time, but I did later on. For twice.
Kamal, Kamal, I don't want to steal your emotion.
Well.
I just want.
We now come to new business. First from the council, is there any new business you'd like to announce?
I just want, everybody that know this Saturday, Greater Hudson Province Neighborhoods Block Party is happening on the bottom of State Street. It'll be from 6:00 to 5:00.
No, probably. Sorry. Yes.
Could you clarify, Carol Ostrink, could you clarify the outcome of the vote on the tourism board resolution?
It was 5:00 to 5:00 and.
Right, but was there a difference? Did you decide that Mr. Sarwar could, to abstain or did his yes vote hold?
He affirmed his.
Okay, I couldn't hear him because there was so much in from the audience.
Anything else from the community? River Cross?
Yes. In regards to DRI.
Yes, sir.
We need some more downtown residents on that committee.
As I think I told you last time.
Okay, but I'm saying it here.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me, I'm not just talking to you.
Oh.
You know, we need some people from downtown. We need some residents who it's ultimately on effect. And we need them now so that what we just saw here doesn't happen there.
Got your question. I want to make sure the mayor hears that. Any else? Yes?
I just want to commend and thank and congratulate Carol Ostrink and the other people who worked hard over a period of many years to make the dock park a reality.
Yeah, I want to speak.
Yes.
I have to say that I really am so, so completely disappointed that the board would do this without taking a little more consideration. And I would like to give you an example of what a local company can do with no money in three months. Our Hudson Waterfront, we're a new group, grassroots, we're focusing on the advocacy. Down on the waterfront, we're fighting to make sure that the waterfront is for everyone in Hudson and everybody can appreciate and enjoy it. We have incredible talent, including world-class graphic designers, writers, marketers. We put together this flyer, we've got a logo. We have in three months done more than any firm. And I saw what Chandler thinks did. I mean, come on, some of this stuff is ridiculous. They actually have the nerve to promote that they were telling a town that they didn't know how interesting they were? They're going to come into Hudson and tell us we don't know how creative we are? So, you missed a huge, huge opportunity with a very weird and suspicious technicality, I would add, when you could have had something like this world-class, really good. So, watch for our Hudson waterfront. We'll show you how it's done, even if our government doesn't.
Andy, I suspect that part of the Chandler proposal involves still community participation.
In their presentation, though, didn't it? In the paperwork, it didn't sound too.
How interesting they are. Yes, Kamal?
I still am, I still am concerned that when you abstain, and perhaps, Andy, you can clarify this, but you need to explain why you're abstaining and usually it's because there's a conflict.
Right.
Or you don't understand what just happened. And I didn't hear that. And I'm not sure, Sarwar, if you understand what the abstain concept is. So, I don't know. Andy, can you clarify that? What does that mean? And why do you do it? Thank you.
And any particular vote, you know, a council person can abstain if they feel that they have some sort of conflict that you resented or there's some other real important issue that's precluding them from acting on a particular action of the council. And ultimately, you know, the, you know, rumination, I would say, that the council person was having, he expressed a desire that he did want to proceed and vote. Ultimately, it rests with the president of the council to review that and.
We didn't hear that discussion, I didn't.
Yeah.
Did that happen? I didn't hear it because I couldn't, I couldn't hear it. Maybe he couldn't, maybe he wasn't speaking loud enough. But I, just to clarify, I would like to hear what that, you know, what the first discussion was, because I couldn't hear it. I don't know anybody else.
Well, actually, actually, then I was citing you when you, in the past, have pointed out that abstention should only be for conflicts. And that was what I was trying to explain to him there, what, you know, what the basis for his abstention. And I also made it clear that no one can force anyone to vote anyway. I mean, if someone wants to abstain, it's their total right. You can't deny someone the right to vote, you can't force them to vote.
Well, I have the same criticism of you abstaining all the time as well because, in reality, we want to vote for you because of your stand on things and you sit there as the city, everybody votes for you, Tom, and it's very difficult. I mean, the city, you're an elected official, that all of the entire city votes for the council. I didn't mean that everybody voted for you. I'm sure that's to be debated, but the point is that you are an equivalent to a city, an entire city vote that judges how you vote. And when you don't vote, it's very difficult for the citizens of Hudson to understand how you stand on issues. I mean, that's just my personal opinion, so.
I'm agreeing with this time.
Since we're on the train of discussing abstaining, I will expound on how I feel about this concept.
I've explained it a number of times why I don't vote, because by most rules, including Roberts, a chair does not vote unless there's a tie, as happened tonight. That's just normal procedure in most public as well as private enterprises. I mean, I'm running the meeting, I'm not here to impose my view. I know previous, yes?
Sidney Long, I live on Carroll Street, and what I'd like to know is when Tiffany wanted to move it forward, you came out and said, I would like to have this vote tonight.
Right.
I think that was pushing it because you did not let the people vote to table it. And I want to read the first sentence of this $75,000 proposal. It says, congratulations, City of Hudson, congratulations, City of Hudson is on its way to creating a destination of distinction. Tell that to the Maker Hotel that already has a hotel, a cafe, a lounge, and a gym in the works. They did, they did not come here waiting for this company to tell us that we're a city of distinction. They did not even bother to Google us and see how incredible Hudson is. And it's a world-class destination. The city, the, what, the tourism board did a wonderful overview of the city, which has not even acknowledged here of how special the city is. They think they're going to, we're, we're, we're on our way for $75,000 for becoming a destination of distinction. And I think that first sentence, everybody should have panicked, like, I'm not kidding. It's like, you know, and there are so many wonderful things in Hudson that they don't, they're going to come three times. They say that in the proposal, three times they've promised to come. I just, I'm appalled by it, I really am. I think it's a colossal waste of money. And there are so many things in Hudson that need money. $5,000 could make all the difference. Our waterfront is like a fabulous thing. They could use a little money. And $75,000 to a company in Tennessee that doesn't even bother to re-Google us and find out how special we are and acknowledge it in their proposal, to me, it's baffling. Thank you. And why didn't you, no, to go back to Tiffany, why didn't you let her ask for the motion to be carried forward?
We already did it last time.
Well, can't you table again? They're table.
We were talking before.
Pardon?
No, the idea is to vote on it.
No, that's your idea.
Well, that's.
That's your idea. It's not, it's not.
Could it have been tabled again, Andy?
Well, you.
Yes or no? Could it have been tabled again?
If you had a motion and a second.
And we did have a motion and a second.
We did have a motion and a second.
We did have a motion and a vote wasn't called.
I like. Scared me out. I'd like to know what Roberts rules says about voting when a motion has been presented and seconded.
Yeah.
I don't, I, I thought you were voting on that this time.
Right.
Because as far as I understand, you had to vote. It was seconded.
Correct.
If you second a vote, a motion, it is, it is to be voted on.
Right.
And I expect that to be voted on first and then you'll have your turn to do this vote properly.
Yes, absolutely.
And, you know, the Constitution of the United States requires a representative government for its people. And I want to be represented by the council, not just one person.
That's right.
And I say this is not a legal vote. It violates the Constitution, it violates water's rules, it violates all actions of government.
All that will be taken under advisement and I hope we can figure out an answer.
Are you looking to that, please, so we make sure that we are not doing anything incorrect?
I mean, you certainly, you know, you certainly had an introduction and a second and a vote and if a majority of the council wanted to vote down that motion, you could have done that and then come back.
No, sir, that's not what happens.
We never vote.
That's not what happens.
The problem is you have to do that. You have to go through the procedure. You can't assume what the majority of the council is going to do, whether you're right or wrong. They have to do it.
They didn't have a chance to vote on the table.
They didn't.
Because.
Look at Article Four, Section Four of the Constitution.
Tom said, I want to move this along. And so, we didn't even do it. And I believe that's inappropriate.
Could we vote on the motion to table now?
You can.
Election, how it would have turned out? I mean, I think we know.
Can we do that? Do we have to amend it to one that we voted on? Can we do that?
Recant.
And we recant it? And we.
The Constitution.
I can't hear you.
By vote or any other thing.
I can't hear you.
Okay, let's go back.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to?
I mean, you take a formal action to pass. So, I mean, you'd have to have a motion and a second to rescind the prior vote. You'd need a majority of that to rescind the prior vote for purposes of.
Yeah, yeah.
Which in essence is the equivalent of a table.
Okay, well, let's do it.
Can I have a motion? No, we have a motion and a second to rescind.
The determination.
Determination to. First, Tiffany, second, sure shot. Let's have it.
We had a motion and a second to table it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, this would be a motion and a second to rescind the determination to approve. So, if you're in favor of rescinding it, you'd vote yes. If you're against rescinding it, you'd vote.
Okay, we'll hold on first.
What was that? I didn't understand.
We're going back.
You said the approval.
The approval.
But so, if you vote yes, does that mean to rescind the approval?
Table it.
So, a yes vote is to rescind.
And table.
No, just to rescind.
Just to rescind. And then we vote to table.
But it would be, it's the equivalent. It's the next one.
Okay, we'll hold on.
Alderman Bouillon.
No.
Alderman Garita.
Aye.
Alderman Holleran.
No.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Morante.
No.
Alderman Mizon.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Sarwar.
Aye, Tiffany.
Rescind.
Rescind.
It's an effective.
But now we vote on table.
Alderman Bolo.
No.
President D.Paige Trump.
Do we have, it's that again? It's already decided.
Six.
Yep. It's rescinded. So, it's, it's tabled.
Well, well.
No, it's rescinded.
Now, we go back to the table, the motion to table.
We already, we have to do it again. I motion.
Tiffany, take it up. And this is a motion to table and.
Yes.
Or no?
Alderman Garita.
Aye.
Alderman Holleran.
No.
Alderman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Morante.
I have a headache. I'm going to have a headache. Wow. I know why, I'm going to go back and read that book back and forth. Am I going to headache myself? No.
Alderman Mizon.
Aye.
Alderman Rosenthal.
Aye.
Alderman Sarwar.
Aye.
Alderman Bolo.
No. Okay, it's tabled. Okay, it's tabled.
Yay!
He must vote that one.
The motion should be...
A second?
Second.
All right.